Mr. McDermott, I'm gonna tell you something. That was one of the most racist comments I have heard in a very long time in this chamber. How dare you? How dare you say that small units create ghettos?
I was making a compare, I saw a report.
I don't wanna take Mr. Burns's thunder away from him. Do you know what size units they're building on, in Solomia?
Oh, yes, I know that.
What's the number?
Four hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Does that make it a better project?
No, but it's not gonna become a ghetto either.
I hope not.
Yeah.
I...
So, you understand, it isn't... We're not gonna go there.
Yeah.
We are not gonna go there.
Yeah, let's not.
Five hundred square feet is not unreasonable if they're randomly distributed throughout housing projects.
I don't mind them being randomly distributed, as I stated before. I am all for that. I do not mind them being randomly distributed. I do not mind a percentage being assigned to them. That's what I said, and I will stand by that. But I don't want a development to be restricted to just that size. So if the language lends itself to it being just five hundred fifty square feet, I have a problem with that. Now if we specify...
Ten percent, twenty percent.
Ten percent, twenty percent, whatever. However, we're going to do it, let's just specify what that five hundred fifty or that five hundred is attached to. That's all I'm saying. And as far as the whole ghetto comment, I don't know, I can't subscribe to that. But what I stated before, I'll stand by that. If it's scattered, we'll work around that. But for the whole entire development to be just five hundred...
The studio apartments with limitations, so that's...
Okay, and we can scatter that, and we can limit it, and we can assign a percentage to it, we can assign a number to it. I'm okay with that.
Now, let me also advise you, that I've done this a lot, and this is not my first time doing this type of work with communities. This issue arises a lot, and when you start assigning a specific ratio, you need to be careful that you're not going to skew the market. That is something I just want to caution you. You all have every right to make your advisory. I'm here, not as an adversary, please don't think I am. I'm here to tell you the honest truth and give you best professional practices and principles for you to help make your decisions. It is certainly not my place to tell you what to do, but I need to tell, make sure that you are fully advised of some of those factors that you should be considering. The other issue is that planners, one of the things that we have learned over the years, is that setting affordable housing in one section of your community is a bad thing. It's a bad thing. It is better that it is just distributed through the market, because then you end up with situations where you may have, okay, well, the only place this can go is right here. So what are you gonna end up with, Ms. Bull, then? Is all the small apartments going in one place, which is not what you want.
No, I said evenly distributed. And also, what makes seven hundred fifty square feet unaffordable? Why not build it to where it is affordable to the residents? Again, why do the residents have to be confined to a matchbox for a living corridor or a living space for it to be affordable?
It isn't, it isn't saying that this is the size it has to be. It's saying this is the minimum. They can be bigger.
And we all know that the builders or the developers are going to start with the minimum. The bulk of their projects will start with the minimum. We know that. So let's, 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 let's not do that. Your, these, the three meetings that you all had, or the five meetings or whatever that you all had, the few people that were in attendance do not speak for the entire city.
Well, there were several hundred people in attendance at these meetings.
Okay, and there's several thousand residents in the city.
And, Ms. Bull, I do not want to have an adversarial relationship with you, and you're taking it like I am fighting you. I'm not. I'm giving you, I'm giving you the advice that came from the community.
And I'm giving you my opinion.
And that, and I understand.
As well as the sentiment of other city residents that have spoken about this situation.
Let's cut this, because we're achieving nothing at this point. The chair will call for a motion on, we'll start at the five hundred square feet. Do we have a motion to approve or reject?
I reject.
All right, do we have, do we have a second to that? Then it dies for lack of a second. Do we have a motion to approve? Yes or no?
Five hundred.
All right, we gotta...
No, no, no.
It's a yes or a no, you approve or not?
I mean, can't we use conditions? We've done it with others.
No.
We need to get over this.
Okay, can't we add conditions to it?
We began this discussion, I think there was, there was square footage and some restriction around it.
Yes, there were, there were some proposed restrictions in location.
So, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm uncomfortable with five hundred. Five fifty with some restrictions around it, I'm comfortable with.
That I can do.
Whatever those are.
All right. If we can't get to five hundred, then we can, can we go five fifty?
I would stick with the five fifty. I, I have a problem with the fact that I don't think, because of the aspect of the market and the way that builders who wanna build mixed-use, who wanna put seven hundred fifty square foot or more units in a building, but also wanna build, you can't tie their hands up.
But are the builders living in these units? Are the builders living in these units? They're not living in the units, they're building the units.
But it's the cost, it's the cost of construction and the cost that they're gonna get in return.
So we inconvenience the residents? We tie, we tie their hands behind their backs because of a cost issue?
Yes, because, because it's passed on to them. Don't you understand? You, you have to understand the way the market works, Ms. Bull. It costs a lot of money to build things now.
I understand that, and that's why I said... That's why I said I'm willing to work around it, but to just completely, I mean...
Nobody's building a city of five hundred square foot units. It's giving builders flexibility based on what they think is their particular market.
So we'll let the builders start at five hundred square feet?
All right.
I make a motion that we approve five hundred and fifty square feet. Okay, that should be throughout the city.
We had a statement read into the record early on as to where this should be located. Would you like to give your locations, John? Yes, you did make a recommendation on locations.
I did, I did. My point was that in the areas where you're trying to foster development, which are your special purpose districts, that's where I suggested five hundred square feet. And when you asked me what my rationale was, or I think Mr. Ernst asked me the rationale, you've allowed four hundred and fifty square feet in units on Solomia that are going to be very expensive units. And where you're correct, that not everybody in the community came out and spoke about it, but people did. People did speak about it. And the other communities around us are doing this very thing.
And what percentage of the residents do those people make up?
Again, did you go to the meetings?
What percentage of the residents?
What, did you go to the meetings?
See, you can't, you can't answer, you can't answer a question with a question. What percentage of the residents do those people make up?
Whoever spoke, whoever spoke did not take your position.
What percentage of the residents?
So my point, to answer your question, Mr. Seifried, is the following. Is the, to answer your quest, to answer your question, Mr. Seifried, this is what I've proposed.
You can't say offensive things, and not then I'm not gonna answer either.
Do you, is it okay if you don't interrupt me? So, what I'm saying is, in the districts in which you're fostering development, your special purpose districts, to have, let's just put it out there, five hundred square feet, no more than twenty percent of those units. That's what I would be asking for. And five hundred and fifty square feet is the related group, which knows what they're doing. Yeah, five hundred fifty square feet, studios, twenty percent, five hundred feet, studios, twenty percent. The related group, which knows what they're doing, have models of less than five hundred square feet that they're building. This is what's happening. And when we're talking about senior housing, okay? We're talking about senior housing, people living on a fixed income, okay? And, and there are people in this community who don't want senior housing, and they're despicable. But as far as seniors go, which is what we're talking about in certain developments, these people are living on a fixed income, okay? Millennials can't make a living anymore, okay? They will never have the standard of living that we have.
Oh, they will one day, John.
Yeah, one day.
One day they will.
One day, the market lost three hundred points today.
One day they will, this is the United States.
Right? Okay, so, all I'm saying is that, forget all the arguments, studio apartments, five hundred square feet, twenty percent in the areas that are special purpose districts, 'cause that's where you're developing.
We understand special purpose.
Will we call that the NRO?
I agree with Mr. McDermott when he said students and seniors. Now, I would be okay with it if it were a certain number for students and seniors, and that it was studios. That it was restricted to studio apartments.
I don't think you can do that. You can't specify particular, when, when you're marketing that, they have to sell that to anybody. It's called Fair Housing Act.
Yeah. And...
Well, that's the area that we would target, I guess.
But we can go with that.
But we didn't say that to Mr. McDermott, so why are we saying that to me?
Twenty percent in the special, use it in the special, the special districts, which includes the NRO.
Well, what else?
That's interesting. You have to make the decision, that's the reason that we even, and told you that.
What I'm saying is, at the end of the day, my decision is not going to change, whether it's overwritten or not. If it's spread around, I'm okay with it. If it's a studio and it's five hundred fifty square feet, certain percentage, I'm okay with. Period, point blank, then.
We can put a cap on twenty percent for project, not more than twenty percent. Five hundred square feet, do we have a support for that?
Five hundred fifty square feet, yes.
Well, I asked for five hundred first, we start low and work our way up.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Mike can go with five hundred?
As long as we have the percentage.
With the percentage in. Charlie? I'm not asking for the vote yet, but I'm taking the sounding.
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right, Kenny's okay, that's two.
Yeah, we'll go with five hundred.
You'll go with five, Bob?
It's a compromise, but I'll live with it.
I will, but I'd, I'd like to define the special purpose districts doesn't, is subject to interpretation.
All right, can we get a rundown, Nixon, on our special districts?
Yeah.
The special purpose district includes the PD.
It's actually an article, I mean, a division in your...
Yeah, it's a division on the, on the Article Four. And then it includes, on the residential office, the PD, the Arts Cultural and Design Overlay District, the Public Use District, the NRO, which is the Neighborhood Development Overlay District, the Regional Activities Center Overlay District, the Planned Corridor Development Overlay District, PCD, the Planned Community Urban Design Overlay District. Those are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, one, nine.
Which is the core of the city.
It's on the Division One, Section Four dash one oh one C. And that lists them, and then if you go further into Division Three, I would see...
Nixon, which page are you on, please?
Oh, I was on the first page of Article Four. It lists them, just the one down, you know, of all the special purpose districts.
Page, what page are you on, please?
Page one.
It's, yeah, C, Overlay and Special Purpose Districts.
The RRO, the PD, the AOD, the PU, the NRO, the RAC.
There's eight, there's eight districts.
Which is basically the core of the city.
Yeah, I mean, not necessarily, 'cause the RRO district is basically, you find them, especially behind the commercial properties on the west side of Seventh Avenue. It's like a transition zoning between the commercial, high-intensive commercial district and the residential family to the west. It's like a sliver, it's not that much, yeah.
All right, so, at this point, the chair now calls for a motion to adopt the five hundred square foot, twenty percent max of a project in the Overlay and Special Purpose Districts.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
All right, Mr. Ernst moves for approval, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Eich. We've had our discussions, those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, all right, that carries.
Are you a no, Mike, or a ye?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, Mike is a yea, Ms. Coolay was the objection, which is okay, we understand that.
So it's, so it's five hundred square feet? Twenty percent in the special purpose?
Yeah, max twenty percent.
No, they're, they're all overlaid. The special purpose are all overlaid.
Only the special purpose districts.
Oh, oh, oh.
The Overlay and Special Purpose Districts, only for studio.
But I thought you said we were going to start at five hundred and work our way up.
We didn't, but five hundred passed, so that's what we stayed.
But we didn't say anything about the five fifty, we didn't say five thirty-five, we didn't...
The chair says we didn't need to, because we got an affirmative vote of five hundred. Remember, this is still a draft, we go forward. All right.
I don't agree with that.
I understand that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order.
Yes, sir.
If I might. In quoting, in quoting an article in reference to this very subject earlier, perhaps I should've said slum or crime-ridden or whatever, but I was quoting...
Oh, your mic, is it, is your mic going on?
Can you hear me now?
I don't know, talk to the mic.
Dunia, can you hear me?
When the chair, when you speak, you're not using the mic.
There, is that better? Oh, okay, sorry, I forgot about that. My other thing, we need about five hundred thousand dollars to redo the room and get microphones for everybody. And enough chairs for people here, we need seven chairs up here and seven mics. Take that up with Mr. Spring. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said in quoting, in our earlier discussions, in quoting an article, and I was quoting the direct term out of the article, perhaps I should've modified it and said slum or crime-ridden, or I don't know what the term is. But what I was, what they were trying to say is that you have to be, we are not Brickell Avenue, and, you know, you, there's two sides of building smaller units. One is that you provide places for people to live, and others are that if, if, if a community is economically challenged, or if a country, or a section, or a state, or a town suffers economic setbacks, and they are certainly one of the more challenged cities, as the city council has said on many occasions, you know, the smaller units sometimes can become an, an area of overcrowding, which begets a lot of problems.
There, it, it, you know, everything works both ways, but we've made a decision, we've made a recommendation, this will be further revised as it goes down the road, so let's move on to the last item. If there is an Article Four, I have one axe to grind with Article Four. And you have one, all right, I'll let you go first, I'll save mine for the end.
Really, it's, it's, it's something that I need clarification on. If we go to page thirty-nine, Article Four. I need to, I need to find out how we came up with, let me get the right article here I got. In the Planned Corridor Overlay Districts that we, we talk about, we're allowing two hundred feet along Northwest Seventh Avenue, but yet along Northeast Sixth Avenue, we only allow a hundred and ten feet. This gain on the west side, a hundred and ten feet. I, I need to know how we came up with two hundred feet along the Northwest Seventh Avenue corridor. How, how that came about? What was, when we said west of, east, east of, on the east side of Seventh Avenue, not on the west, but on the east side, are we talking about bordering I-95? That one stretched in there?
Yes, yes.
And I'm, I'm still having a hard time visualizing putting something that would be two hundred feet high along that corridor.
I mean, again, again, this is language from the comp plan. And then, as you recall...
And believe it or not, I came up with the higher comp plan, but I had no idea how that got into looking at that corridor and getting put into that little stretch, narrow stretch there.
I mean, in terms, I don't think it's that narrow, 'cause it's pretty deep in parts. But that number was what, there was a planning council recommendation to the city council with the comp plan, especially on Northwest Seventh Avenue, and I'm pretty sure we were talking about, you know, you see all those tall buildings along ninety-five, and, and then we established a PCD there with a greater height, we don't hide greater than, and then that proposed in the other PCD corridors of the city. It, it was supposed to have, you know, residential component, but however, when that got to the city council, and the city council approved the PCD along the Northwest Seventh Avenue, excluding the western portion because of the proximity to the single family. And they are only allowing that along ninety-five, however, with no residential component. So, so that's our, so this is the same exact language from the comp plan that is being transported into this, 'cause we have to create a new section for that PCD to reflect, you know, those amendments.
In reality, no, no developer has come forth with a two hundred foot high building for that area, correct?
I mean, so far...
Is it even marketable, or, or even realistic to put a two hundred foot building along that corridor? I, I, you know, I can't visualize.
I mean, I mean, I mean, in terms of, of the building, the structure itself, yes, it, it can be built structurally speaking, but as far as, you know, having, if you have received any inquiries, you know, from developers, you know, so far we have not.
Does it, does it go against the grain of what you termed as the Chinatown overlay?
I mean...
Which may not even, their architectural height and the design may not even be comparable to a two hundred foot building.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Again, I know, I'm the one that supported the two hundred foot building limit, and, and...
You know, if, if I made...
Maybe I said it flippantly at the time or whatever, but it's really, doesn't make any...
As you go downtown, you see off of I-95, tall buildings over two hundred feet.
But they're on the other side in areas like...
No, I, I see some on, on the west side, but the fact is that...
But we haven't stated what they are.
One of the reasons I think that we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not letting residential go there, because eventually, we think in the near term, unfortunately. Back in the eighties, when we passed a thing that couldn't build any higher than four stories, we shot the city in the foot, we, we killed development. So I'm looking at the traffic jam that you got right now coming down I-95. You guys are planners. Eventually, people don't wanna drive all the way up to Broward County. They're gonna move closer to Brickell or closer to the Central Business District of downtown Miami, or the port, or what have you. And that area will develop, just like any other city. If you go to Chicago, New York, or what have you, San Francisco, LA, you'll see tall residential mixed-use buildings off of the expressway. And I probably won't see it in the next twenty years, but you know what? I venture to say that that's gonna probably be one of the wealthiest areas of the city if we do it right, if we plan it right. Just like one hundred nineteenth Street. I don't, that, that can be turned around and, and really be turned into a nice area. And I, I think that if we did, if we let residential go over there, you would have a great mixed-use, office, residential, commercial. But we're not, you know, not eventually, it'll...
All right, again, I was, I was not, I'm not, I'm not advocating opposition to it. I, I needed to understand why we came up with the two hundred feet, and how this, this got by. And I personally don't think that anybody's gonna build a two hundred foot. I, I, I would hope so, and it's a great Class A one, it's a class...
But then again, it's a maximum, it's not a minimum. So you don't have to build all the way to two hundred feet.
Okay.
There is one issue that I've got, and I'd like to know where we can address it. In this area that we are politely calling Chinatown, which is that area of Northwest Seventh Avenue from one hundred and twenty-fifth through one hundred and thirty-fifth, we have specifically disallowed residential housing. We very specifically disallowed residential housing.
Right, and it does say that in, in the, in the Northwest Seventh Corridor, because that's what your comprehensive plan says.
Well, I wanna go on record as telling you that that is, in my opinion, an artificially engineered travesty. I don't know the motivations behind it, but there is no mixed-use development anywhere that can possibly succeed without a strong residential component. And the powers that be that have sought to do this are incredibly nearsighted, misguided, and obviously being fed this by sources that have not as yet come into the public light. And as chairperson of this commission, I make it my statement, and would seek the input of the other commissioners, that that needs to change. There must be a residential component within that Chinatown development. Otherwise, all we have done is spent thirty million bucks or something for basically a can of paint. And a real expensive can of paint, how long there, you know? Unless we're serious about redeveloping that corridor. So far, this has been simply a public relations and marketing ploy without any real substance behind it. If you want to have meaningful mixed-use development, you've got to have residential incorporated into it. So what is the process for making a statement for residential development in that specific district? Answer me that.
Everything that you tell us tonight, I've been documenting.
Yeah, please do.
I've been documenting in my chicken scratchy handwriting. Whether you agree with it...
As long as you can read it.
Of course, whether you agree with it or disagree with the situation, I'm documenting it. These comments, then, go on a specific form that when it goes before, when this same document goes before city council, they will know, these are your recommendations. You, you disagreed on something, you didn't get consensus, or yes, you did get consensus on some, on a particular thing.
I would ask the planning commission to make an affirmative recommendation that residential housing specifically be included along the Northwest Seventh Avenue corridor, which is also known as Chinatown.
You're talking about on the west side of Northwest Seventh Avenue? I mean, on the east side of Northwest Seventh Avenue.
In the district, and let them sort out which side to put it on. You see, we've called that a mixed-use district, and we've called it Chinatown, but we haven't done anything with it.
But, maybe, from one hundred nineteenth to one hundred forty-third. I thought there was mixed-use allowed on the west side, is that correct?
They specifically barred residential.
Off of I-95, I agree.
Yeah, and the I-95 makes perfectly good sense where to put it, although I don't wanna tell them where to park it yet. I think we should just make the affirmative statement that it needs to include a residential component.
And you probably, like Charlie said, you'll probably get some developers, then?
Yes, you might, but I, but, but the first step is for the planning commission to make an affirmative statement by means of a resolution, a motion that that needs to be incorporated into that development.
I won't do it, because I have issues with the whole concept of Chinatown, so I don't wanna...
They're working to develop the district, and right now they're not allowing any residence, any residential units.
I, I agree with you, but I think that the point still is, if anything's gonna be done there, it, there's gonna have to be a residential component.
Yes, and currently, they disallow that, and I think when you take the exact opposite position and make it clear that however they need to do this, there must be a residential incorporated into it.
I'll, I can concur with that.
Would you make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make a motion to that.
I'm telling you, make a motion, and any second to...
Residential unit to be incorporated in the designation, Chinatown designation.
Whatever they wanna call it later on, but in the Seventh Avenue corridor, which currently is called Chinatown. And may change next week, we never know.
Or is listed in the LDA, the Seventh Avenue corridor.
Yes, the Seventh Avenue corridor.
There's my motion.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Any commission discussion? Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Halt.
So, a specific recommendation would be to urge the city commit, city council...
To put a residential component in there.
...to pursue an amendment to the comprehensive plan to allow residential.
Absolutely.
Or just amend the term where it says land use, introduce it there.
Well, the point that staff has made is that it's in the comprehensive plan, and that needs to be amended before you can do it in...
Yes, so make the recommendation, we do it that way, all right? That's the clarification, we're fine with that.
Correct.
We have to make the statement, otherwise, whatever game they're playing is going to be a wasted effort.
Well, when you say residential, are you talking about apartment complexes, lots, things of that nature? Or like homes and townhomes?
Well, you, you, the, the way that it's a commercial district, you don't have the lot size for private residential, it has to be apartments, it's gotta be multifamily in nature.
Yeah, we're looking at multifamily.
With, like, the businesses at the bottom of it?
Yeah, that would be mixed use, yes. You've got to have the residential components to make that a truly viable mixed-use development. They're talking mixed use, they're not allowing residential. It is, there's got to be something going on behind the scenes why that specific area was carved out and residential was banned.
And you can actually clarify to say mixed use including residential.
Yes.
Or residential as well as mixed use including residential.
You can put it, yeah, well, it's really got to be mixed use because of how it's, you have very little depth to the property, so you kind of have to just go with mixed u, with, with, with multifamily in that concept, all right?
Can we vote on the motion?
Yeah, let's vote on the motion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any objection? Hearing none, that's the unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. Let's run that one up the, up the flagpole and see what they want to do with it.
Take the-
All right, now, at this time, we, we've had all the discussions on the issues of four. The chair will call for a motion to approve Section Four as amended, Article, Article Four, sorry. Some move.
This, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Items, uh, came up during your discussion, uh-
You'd like to talk about.
Yeah, two minutes, very briefly.
Two minutes, very briefly.
The clock's not running.
Okay, Kevin Burns, my address is on the list.
Yeah, we've got that on the record.
It's, it's a very minute, very simple item, but it, it just touches me the wrong way.
Get to the point.
Laundry mats on Biscayne Boulevard, we are just flat out not allowing them. There's one that was next to City National Bank for twenty-five years, operated very nicely. I take my comforters there, I take my dog blankets there, nobody ever had a problem there. At the new public shopping center, there used to be a very high-end, very nice laundromat there, never bothered anybody. They left because, uh, the, the business next door expanded. I don't think that we should just have a blanket not allow on Biscayne Boulevard the opportunity of a laundromat. R K Plaza, in the very rear of R K Plaza, there was a laundromat there and dry cleaner that still exists today that has been there for thirty-five years, that's non-conforming. I don't want us to start separating the city into who, the haves and has-not, who can do this. Why would you not allow a very well-operated laundromat to be somewhere within the shopping centers of either R K or the, 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 where the City National Bank is or the public shopping center if that's a legitimate business? If I want to do my dog comforters or, or comforters and dog beds, I have to go to West Dixie Highway or I have to go to Northwest Seventh Avenue. Why is it okay to have a laundromat on Seventh Avenue? It's okay to have a laundromat on West Dixie Highway, but it's not okay to have a laundromat on Biscayne Boulevard. We are getting very micromanaging of-
Your, your point is well taken.
Of, of our community, and let's, you know, let's be careful.
What zoning district does it not appear in? It appears in all the commercial zoning districts.
C B one and C B two, C two that is not allowed, you just talked about it.
The South Service Laundromat?
Uh-huh.
Yes, they, they are permitted uses on C one, C two B E, C two B W.
Is it new to allow them or not allow them?
Yes, they're, they're, they're new to be allowed, yes.
To allow them?
So the recommendation is-
But didn't it come up earlier in this discussion not to allow them?
Not in that sense, no, we didn't.
Well, Bob, didn't you bring it up to say not to allow them?
I brought it up.
It's okay. Bob brought it up, the, the coun, councilman, the commissioner brought it up not to allow them. And there was, uh, there was no really much conversation because something you just glanced over. I think it's wrong not to allow that.
The current plan is recommended allows them.
The current plan is recommending it, the current code says no. You had a commissioner that brought up, said that he didn't think it should be allowed, and there was nobody who voiced an opposition to or for with it. I would like to see you all support allowing them to be on Biscayne Boulevard and not excluded just strictly from Biscayne Boulevard, thank you. And I don't own a laundromat.
Didn't remember, uh, laundromats are fine with me.
They're fine with me.
Two, three, four.
I agree, they're fine with me.
They're not fine with me, no.
All right, well, then we'll take a motion to recommend they be included. So move.
Move it, be included.
I second.
All right, and Ms. Bela seconds, and we'll take a vote, one, two, three, four, to one, right? Bob, you're opposed.
I'm opposed.
All right, four to one, we recommend the inclusion of laundromats. Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've sat here very politely and patiently waiting for my turn, while others have come up and been recognized on how to speak.
We, we understand the, the, the awkwardness, yes.
I am speaking specifically with respect to your discussion regarding self-storage, and would like to know whether I should speak about that now or as you enter Section Five.
Because it rolls into the next section anyway.
Right, so what would you prefer? Because I'd like, uh, Mr. Each to be here for the discussion.
Well, he's gone to the men's room, so maybe we'll, we'll wait till we get into Article Five.
But I, that's the reason I want to speak.
No problem, we'll get to you, nobody's getting, nobody's going to get left behind.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's address, uh, yeah, we ready to, uh, move and approve Article Four?
Okay.
Yeah, we did, okay, fine.
Just a point of clarification, please. I don't think you voted on the change to prohibit self-storage east of Biscayne Boulevard. And if you're voting on four and it includes that, then I'd like to address it now, I don't-
I think that we've already indicated very strongly that we don't want self-storage anywhere between the Biscayne Canal and, uh, Bay Shore Drive.
Some of you have done so, yes, without us having the opportunity to discuss it, but I don't-
So do you, do you want storage there?
I've been working for over a year on a project that would be there, yes.
Oh, well, I'll let you speak to that for the record.
Okay, thank you, I'm just wondering, um, Mr. Each is back now also.
All right.
What, what happened?
No, I haven't started yet.
Well, go ahead, state your name for the record.
My name's Josh Dubin, and my office is at one seven seven zero one Biscayne Boulevard. My wife has had a store in North Miami for forty years and grew up down the street in the shores. Um, I'm, I just want to, you know, under the theory that a picture is worth a thousand words, if I may just approach and give this to you.
Yes, you may. I want to make sure everybody gets their opportunities here.
Speak over this, what I want to hear.
Okay, fine, we can share.
Sure.
Uh, I'm part of the group that owns the Beachway Apartments, which are directly opposite the Total Bank Building on a hundred and twenty-third and nineteenth Avenue. Our property is, uh, prior to today, zoned residential, multifamily, but has a commercial designation in the future land use map. Uh, over a year ago, I was here till four o'clock in the morning when discussion was had about whether it should be residential and get a hundred and ten feet, or it should be commercial and have fifty-five feet. And we sat and went through the process and have spent the last over twelve months meeting with council people, we've met with every council person, we've met with citizens in the area, we've met with architects, we've met with staff. What we've, what we have been planning on doing for the last eight to twelve months, waiting for the L D Rs to be finalized, was to come in there and build a self-storage facility that is transit-oriented so that it has bicycle storage, a built-in bus stop, a shut, North Miami shuttle stop if need be. Uh, and, and went to great lengths to design one that I think you will agree looks like an office building or, uh, a Hampton Inn or something else of high quality. It does not look like a self-storage.
I got to say, this does look good.
Okay, so the, the point I want to make is, I think you're being a little bit arbitrary and perhaps too, too exclusive by saying you absolutely don't want something when you have the right, when it comes to site plan approval and design approval, to see what it is we're proposing and to eliminate the use just ab initio without hearing what it is and seeing what it is that some of us are contemplating. We have a, a dilapidated three, three-apartment building property now that we're doing our best to keep alive, given its age and its condition. This project is a fifteen to twenty million dollar project that would go on the corner of nineteenth Avenue and a hundred and twenty-third Street. It's, it's extremely well-received by other municipalities because it is very low intensity, very low parking, very low traffic, very low use of utilities, doesn't impact evacuation zones, and can be used as a central place for drop-off pickup if you want to cut down on traffic. This is a huge improvement in use of that location. And, and we've put something in front of you now, which is exactly the plan in its current, I won't say exactly. It's our design in its current stage that we've met with staff on, et cetera. I'd ask you to reconsider your blanket prohibition and, and just accept the fact that your site plan approval process and your design review, if you establish a design review board and the other boards you were talking about tonight, will regulate what it's going to look like. But please do not make the economic decision to keep us from moving forward with a project that we've been working on for so long and have literally been in the communities, meeting with residents and council people and staff to make sure we got the input and the design that people wanted to see there. Uh, one side comment, as you move to smaller apartments or rental apartments, self-storage is critical to these people because they're downsizing in many cases, or they have no place for their luggage or their surfboard or their skis or their bicycles. This is an important component, and both with respect to the self-storage, with respect to the laundromat, which I'm just pulling out of the air now. You're making decisions, and also with respect, with all due respect, when you talk about the size of these units, you have to recognize that the marketplace is going to dictate what is successful and what isn't. So you don't need to decide if five hundred is too small or if self-storage, if we have too much self-storage, because if it doesn't work, people are not going to build it. If the demand isn't there, people are not going to build it. We're not going to design it, we're not going to get financing, we're not going to get pre-sales, we're not going to get leases. So you have to trust, as much as I'm a Democrat, sorry, you have to let the free market dictate what gets built and, and, and what it looks like. And so I would respectfully request that you reconsider your, your earlier discussion and not blanket prohibit this from the canal to the bay, specifically and selfishly speaking about my property because it's currently, uh, scheduled to be rezoned, C two B two, C two B E, C two B E. Um, and we worked very hard to develop language that is in the proposal you have today that limits where these things can be built. It's not going to be near single-family, it's not going to be in near park. I, I, Mr. Each, I don't know if you heard when the consultant was reading those things because there's very narrow parameters within which this can be built, so it's not going to proliferate around town in the C two B E areas. There's been a lot of thought, a lot of study, and a lot of input into this particular project, and I would ask you to revisit your prior discussion in consideration of it, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'd say he's, he's a worthy advocate, yes, sir, Mr. Halt.
Can I ask him a question or?
You may.
What's left? Sir, I'm sorry, uh-
Josh Dubin.
The microphone, please.
Um, have you filed any applications with the city?
No, we, uh, met with the city, uh, prior to, uh, or during the, uh, the comp plan amendment process, and then, uh, designed it and redesigned it after we got some input, and met with the city again on at least one occasion, possibly two occasions. Um, and then went in before the end of the year and said, we would like to submit this now. Uh, and we were aware that this moratorium was coming up because you were going to revisit the land development regulations. Um, we, we were advised that we ought to sit tight and let the L D Rs go through and that, um, we ought to attend the community meetings, which we did, at least three of them, to get input from the community and to speak to the councilmen and also the consultants, et cetera, to try to be in the best position when we came forward. Standing here today, I have a property that when we acquired, had residential zoning and future land use of commercial. We, we didn't make a big, uh, push for the increased height. You, you already previously recommended over about a hundred-foot project immediately next door to us, including a parking garage. Uh, we're across the street from a project that's over a hundred feet tall. Um, there's a, there's a bit of an arbitrary approach going on here. So we would have, we would have applied had we not been urged to wait till the L D Rs had, had, uh- Sorry, long answer to a short question.
I asked you to wait for the L D R.
Uh, the question came up whether it was prudent to come in with a standalone application at the end of the year when this was beginning to gain some momentum, or if we would be better served to step back, and we've delayed our project literally probably six months by doing so, step back, participate in the process, and in the, in the community meetings and with the staff, and, and, and we've met with each of the council people. And, um, when, when I work on stuff like this, whether I'm an attorney for someone or whether I'm a principal, as I am in this, I like to do it from the grassroots up. I don't like to come in and try to cram it down. So we took the last six months to get out in the community, to meet with people, to meet with the council, to meet with staff, to try to come in with a project that we thought served a lot of purposes and was very attractive. And so that's, that's why we chose this path. And now I'm feeling that we were, you know, we may have made a mistake. Um, and again, we just ask you to reconsider your earlier position, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Each, the argument and motion were yours, so we tend to-
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from staff on this.
All right.
Uh, when, when was, you know? And did, did this, did this gentleman meet with you guys on this thing or?
Tanya, do you want to address this then?
Could you repeat the question?
The gentleman there that he, he said he met with you all on, on this program?
Yes, he met with staff before, with a request for a tax amendment to allow for a storage facility in the C two B E district. Um, at the time when the proposal was made, though, the L D R process was actually already underway. Um, there's a moratorium, as you know, that's already in place, which prohibits any type of submittal during the time when the L D R process is underway. So that type of tax amendment has to be reviewed by the planning commission, as you know. So either you go the private road, so you still would have been right here. Either you go the private road as an individual applicant or you go with the collective process as a part of the overall, um, land development regulation update. But it still has to go through the planning commission.
And then to add to Tanya's answer-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, to add to Tanya's answer, uh, because of the inconsistency between the zoning map and the land use map, you would have also to do a zoning map amendment.
Correct.
And then a tax amendment to allow that.
All right, so it's not impossible, it's just that there are two steps that have to be taken.
It's two completely different steps that still brings you right here before this board. And one actually requires a supermajority vote for the map amendment, so it's even more arduous.
I mean, you know, I, I, I look at this, and this is not what I expected when I see self-storage. I'm, I'm looking at that one on Biscayne Boulevard and south of us. And I mean, this does look like a hotel, I mean, if this is the way it's going to be done.
Most people expect to see orange roll-up doors. There's, there's no access from the, from the outside, it's all internal access, parking is underneath, there's no exposed roll-up doors, et cetera. We're very hard to do that. But I think it speaks to the point that the, that a storage unit, a blanket prohibition probably is the wrong idea because there are examples like this one where this becomes a good neighbor for the neighborhood.
Well, okay, and then I, I, I hope that we would, go ahead, sir.
But it also speaks to the point where, what I stated before, how the units become so small that they will need self-storage. And then two, it also speaks to the point where I believe Mr. Maderik made, um, where you were, you made a comment about, um, not being able to predict, um, the market, but there are so many high-rises in downtown Miami off of Brickell, which we all like to refer to Brickell, that have been unsuccessful in overbuilding, and they, they can't get the bodies in to rent these properties. So it also lends itself to that as well. I mean, I think it's beautiful, I really do, but it also speaks to the points that I made.
All right, so Mr. Each, you made the motion, it was your point to carry.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's going to be built like that, it's, it's a good building, but I'm slow, I'm slow, that's right.
Mr. Chair.
Can, can, could we carve out, uh-
Yeah, I have some carve-out language.
Yeah, can we have a carve-out language perhaps?
Let's listen to what you've got.
So the, the prohibition was prohibited on one twenty-third to one twenty-fifth Street from Biscayne Canal to Bay Shore Drive. And I've written, except for projects on, I think it was one twenty-fifth Street, that have been designed and discussed with C P and D staff prior to May seventeenth, twenty seventeen, and on which there has been reliance by the property owner proven to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
All right, and that way we, we get the, the, um-
So then would just that project be grandfathered?
There's a door open to go forward.
What we're trying to do is we're trying to carve out.
Yeah.
So then would that project be grandfathered? I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yeah, so we, we-
Grandfathered.
The language would be the same except for your piece.
Uh, uh, that would be very much appreciated, and of course, we would comply with whatever your development standards are and your design comments.
I, I would support that.
If you're going to build it like this, I can, I can say yeah. Uh, uh, and do you currently own that apartment building over there?
I don't know, why you ask?
No, no, I, I don't, no. I mean, I'd like to see it done.
Yes, we do, and we do.
Now, I probably see you on my daily walk over there.
I don't know, you may, but...
No, and I know the, I know the area quite well, I walk through there every day.
And by the way, it is, it's across the street from a gas station. It's not as if there's no industrial or commercial things going on there.
You know, the thing that we're trying to do here, and I've been here 40 years, is to redevelop the city, 123rd Street. How many storage areas are you going to have? You're not encouraging nightlife, you're not encouraging any synergy out there, you're not encouraging any excitement. There's no, you know, there's nothing, you know, hotels downtown, you know, I want to... I might be 71, but I still feel young, you know? I want to see the city...
I fully understand.
Yeah, and since you're, I mean, you've got a lot of work into this, and I hate to hell, like... I mean, it's a good, honestly, this is, I'm quite surprised.
Well, that's why I wanted you to say it.
Okay, so I can go along with that. I'll go along with that. Yeah, I'll go, I think that's a fair deal.
All right, so Kenny, do we, we need to make a motion to adopt the revised language?
I make that motion that way.
And a second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, you've got your carve-out, okay? All right, we've adopted Section 4, we're ready to go into Section 5.
One thing I wanted to mention on 4, the transportation overlay district, we just made a notation on that, right? That's still going to come down the line.
Mr. Chair, may I make, I need just a tad bit of a clarification.
Yeah.
On page 7, on the housing of Article 7, on the size of the housing.
Yeah.
You did not specifically reject the 550 throughout the city.
No, we allowed it to go to 500.
You allowed it, but you, so you are rejecting this language and replacing it with the 520% only in special districts, correct? Thank you so much for that clarification.
All right, chair needs to hit the men's room, we're in recess, only five minutes. And we start with Article...